Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time right now is seven P. M. I'm going to ask that our clerk Wykoff, please read the role, call the role.
Can you hear me? There I am. Council members present in establishing a quorum are council members Poulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. Council member Gamble informed me yesterday evening that he would not be here this evening. So unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Saying no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. I've asked council member Davis, since he only has so many more council meetings left, to please lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under our indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, excepting quasi judicial matters that are subject to public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. We will go ahead and start off with anybody who is in the in the audience here in person who would like to speak to come forward. The first name, I have three people who have signed in. I can't quite read the first name. Is that Chris? Next one down. Okay, and the first one is not speaking. Okay, all right, great. So Jamie, please come forward and state your name and the area of residence. And we'll start the timer. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jamie Lees. My residence is in Monroe, and I hope to be a business owner in Monroe within the next probably five years, I would say. I'm a State Farm agent, and I'm here to ask you to make sure how to say that I want you to drop, allow the cannabis companies to come in and have more shops here in Monroe instead of not having any in Monroe. Because right now, all we can do is go outside of Monroe to shop for that. It would bring us a lot of tax dollars, and it would be really great for our communities and our businesses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person we have who's signed up to speak is Colin Spradlin. Good evening. So please go ahead and state your name and area of residence for the record, and then we'll start the timer.
My name is Colin Spradlin, resident of, I believe, Snohomish, just out past the high school here, but a business owner in downtown Monroe. And I'd just echo those comments. Like to lift a band on marijuana dispensaries in town. Again, for traffic, like driving is a pain, and also revenue is a big part, so.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening who is in the audience? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, saying none. If you're online and would like to speak this evening, please go ahead and hit star nine if you're on the phone, or please hit your raise end button in Zoom. All right, not seeing anybody. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is proclamation for police and fire appreciation week. I'll go ahead and read this into the record. Recognize the week, the week of November twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, is police and fire appreciation week. Whereas the Monroe Police Department and Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue Personnel keep our community safe. And whereas these devoted first responders risk their lives for the lives of others and selflessly run toward danger to keep us safe. And whereas hard work and commitment are at the core of ensuring that Monroe is a safe place for everyone, as expressed through these agency's mission and vision statements. Monroe Police Department's mission is to be dedicated to the pursuit of excellence in providing professional law enforcement services. And Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue Rescue's mission is earning trust through action by the vision of being a trusted leader, serving the community with a commitment to innovation and improvement. And whereas during the week of the twelfth to the eighteenth of November, two thousand and twenty-three, Monroe businesses display their support by posting thank you posters, including messages on the reader boards. And our first responders receive many thank you cards and signs from residents, businesses, schools, and other organizations. Now, therefore, Jeffrey Thomas to hereby issue this proclamation as an expression of appreciation and a symbol of gratitude for the exceptional quality of public service provided by our police officers and personnel and firefighters and fire service personnel as they continue to dedicate themselves to keeping our residents, employers, and visitors safe. And proclaim proclaim the week of the twelfth to the eighteenth of November, two thousand and twenty-three, as police and fire appreciation week in the city of Monroe, and encourage our community to express their appreciation for police and fire personnel. Going to invite our representatives this evening. Paul Ryan forward. We don't have anybody from fire, or do we? Council member Fisher, please come forward. And council members, if you'll all please come up. Yeah, okay. All right, so you two, you two get to stand here. Make sure you and all right, there you go. And then I'm just everybody see the camera. I don't know if the picture's gonna go anywhere, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so call the order, roll call, pledge allegiance, public comments, presentations, and public hearing. Oh, yes, council member Hanford, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say we've been doing this for twenty-five-ish years.
Yep.
And very proud to, very thankful to be living in a city where we recognize and value our first responders. And so it's very, it's just a feel good. I always look forward to this week right before Thanksgiving. So very thankful to be sitting up here with all of you and staff to be honoring these people. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, council member Fisher.
Uh, yeah, thanks.
Firefighter Fisher.
So I don't work in this area, but I started in this area. I know a lot of the people that service this area, so the firefighters and the medics. They are really good people. We have some really good people that run around those big red fire engines and medic units and aid cars and come to our need. So I will gladly take this for them. I appreciate it. Very, very cool. And yeah, it's just a really neat thing, and thanks for the recognition.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's a public hearing. This is the item six point one, public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four revenue sources and mayor's recommended two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four mid biennial budget adjustment. And we have Director Hassert here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So as outlined in the agenda bill that's in your packet, there's been two public hearings prior to tonight, when on the seventeenth of October as well as the twenty-fourth of October. My understanding is there were no comments received during those public hearings. So I'm not going to take you through the whole presentation again, since you have seen it twice already. Just a couple of reminders that the mid buy adjustment is meant to be more of a housekeeping item to just kind of true up everything as we go into the second year of the biennium. However, property taxes do have to be adopted each year. And the property tax ordinance, which is part of the consent agenda, it's already been accepted for first reading, represents a zero percent increase to the property taxes before addition of new construction. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I am available if there are any questions. We'll turn it back.
All right, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Director Hassert before I read through the script and we open the public hearing? Council member Davis, I put my progressives on, so. Wish me luck. All right, thank you very much, Director Hassert. Okay, before we proceed with the hearing, please note that the rules and procedures that apply to this hearing are available in the agenda packet and on the city's website. To summarize, after the hearing is open, city staff will present a staff report, and council members may ask questions for clarification of staff or wait until another time. The public hearing is now open. For the record, I am informing all parties interested in these proceedings that the city clerk has forwarded to the city council all timely written or otherwise recordable comments that have been submitted regarding the subject matter of this hearing. I have already asked staff member Director Hassert to provide a description of the matter under consideration. I have already asked whether or not the council members have any clarifying questions of staff, to which they said not at this time. Okay, at this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the public or council members who wish to speak to the matter. Unless the council wishes to impose a different limitation, there will be a three-minute time limit on each speaker. Your time will begin after you introduce yourself and provide your area of residence or association with the city of Monroe. Please be respectful of all speakers and of the hearing procedure itself. Please also note that this hearing is an opportunity for you to address the city council. It is not a question and answer session. With that said, do we have anybody who's signed in to speak this evening regarding the public hearing for the mid by budget amendment? Thank you. If you're online and would like to speak to this, please hit star nine, or please raise your hand in the Zoom app. Okay, saying none. I'll turn to the audience, just in case you didn't write your name down and would like to speak to the public hearing for the budget. Seeing none.
Mayor, Mayor. So sorry, sorry, it's Danny, sorry, just to reiterate, it's for the mid buy adjustment and the revenue sources. It's a required public hearing for the revenue sources as well.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, anybody want to speak to either of those? All right. All right, okay, good. I had to make sure and I was looking through the right part of the progressives. I think we're good. To, all right, so we've already gone ahead, nothing. Okay, do any council members have any additional questions to ask of staff? All right, saying none. I'm going to proceed with closing the public hearing, so this is the conclusion of the public hearing unless there are objections. It says pause. Okay, the hearing is now closed. All right. Anything further? We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item. And the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I turn to the council. Everybody want to approve the, go ahead, council member Scarborough.
Can you second?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from council member Scarborough, a second from council member Kenny. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, I will call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item eight point one, ordinance number zero two one, two thousand and twenty-three, temporary meeting locations. And clerk Wykoff will be presenting. Clerk Wykoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you this evening is an ordinance to amend the code for temporary meeting locations. This may sound very familiar to you, since you already did this once back in June. Some of the boards and commissions, specifically Planning Commission and the Economic Development Advisory Board, found that the space at the seven, six, nine Village Way building to be a bit small for their meeting. So they have made arrangements to meet at the Fire District Building. And that is what this code amendment will do. As with the previous ordinance, once the municipal campus project is complete and we get to move back in, the ordinance will automatically repeal unless we repeal or extend by ordinance when the time comes. That is my report.
Thank you, clerk Wykoff. For any questions or a motion, council member Kenny? I saw you reaching for your flag.
Thank you. I moved to waive council rules of procedure requirement for two readings of an, oops, wrong one. Is that it? I will carry on for two readings of an ordinance before adoption.
I have a motion from council member Kenny, a second from council member Davis for motion one under new business item eight point one regarding the rules of procedure. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Council member Kenny, do you wish to continue with the floor?
Certainly. I move to accept as first reading and adopt interim ordinance zero two one slash two thousand and twenty-three, amending chapter four point one zero MMC. General provisions is previously amended by ordinance number zero one zero slash two thousand and twenty-three, designating temporary regular meeting locations for the Planning Commission and Economic Development Advisory Board during the pendency of the city's municipal campus improvement project, providing for severability, establishing an effective date, and providing for an automatic sunset.
A motion from council member Kenny and a second from council member Davis, which is motion number two under new business item number eight point one. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item number eight point two. This is ordinance number zero two two's two thousand and twenty-three, amending MMC eight point oh four animal control for first reading. Commander Ryan is here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So we should turn on your microphone, I think.
There we go. Not working.
Yes.
Very good. So we have before you tonight an ordinance to repeal a section of our animal control code. If you didn't know, the police department is the managing department who oversees animal control regulations and pet licensing here in the city of Monroe. And the reason we really started to examine this is because we started to see diminishing compliance with our pet licensing regulations. Now, I want to clarify, this is very strictly to licensing of household dogs and cats in our homes. Nothing else, nothing more than that. Currently, our code is situated in a way that residents with pets need to license their pets annually. Depending if the pet is spayed or neutered, there's a different fee structure that must be paid to the police department. And in your council packet, you'll notice the revenues for the specific regulatory action isn't much. We're talking, I think about sixteen hundred dollars a year, and we've also had some decreasing revenues in that, in that area, too. So with that in mind, we actually brought this to the Public Safety Committee, I think in October. We outlined a couple of different policy options that might be available, and there was overwhelming support to repeal pet licensing altogether. We've done a little bit of research into that. There are some agencies over in the tri cities that have repealed pet licensing in your council packet. We noted that we hadn't gotten feedback from some of those agencies. We since have, and what we've heard is exactly what we thought, which was that the repeal of a pet licensing requirement hasn't created any sort of adverse community issue. I think it was in Kennewick and in Pasco. So if you have any questions about this, I'm certainly capable of answering them, but we hope that you'll consider this repeal, and we see it as a positive thing for our community.
Thank you, Commander. Questions, council member Kenny? I think I saw your hand up.
The pet licensing regulations, I actually don't know the answer, how far back this can go. One of the things that we did look at is the why behind why we license pets. Yep, and what we really came up with was to assist in the rehoming of lost animals. And if you look at how our society has really grown and transitioned over the last few decades, we now have social media where there's pages dedicated to rehoming lost pets. Microchipping has been a huge advancement in this to help with bringing pets back to their owners. And so it's not, it's not lost on us as a department that we still need to push a communications campaign that really emphasizes population control measures with your pets, microchipping, and just responsible pet ownership. But the idea of regulating a license for a pet owner's just, it didn't really seem like the governmental interest was really something that we needed to consider, so.
Council member Kenny, can you turn on your mic? Thank you.
To be truthful, I didn't realize we were even still doing that. I thought it had already been done away with. So I totally support what you're doing. Think you have bigger fish to fry.
Yeah, thank you. Nineteen ninety-one, I'm hearing from our city clerk.
Right, any other questions from the council? Go ahead, council member Hanford, or a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I'm one of the eleven people that are actually licensing their cats.
Are you looking for a rebate, sir?
So exactly, so I'm wondering. I'm joking, I'm joking, but I am one of the eleven, and I'm one of the fifty-seven dogs, so. But I know others that haven't licensed. So, yeah, it totally makes sense. And so I'll make a motion. I move to accept as first reading ordinance number zero two two, two thousand and twenty-three, amending chapter eight point zero four animal control, eliminating the requirement of annual licenses for dogs and cats, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
A motion from council member Hanford, multiple seconds. I'll go ahead and take the one that I heard closest to me, council member Davis. So the first is council member Hanford, second is council member Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the votes. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is council member reports. And to that, I'll go ahead and start down there on the end, council member Starborough. Thank you, council member Fisher.
Nine three four.
Thank you, council member Hanford.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I went and attended the open house this morning at Fairfax Hospital, just around the corner for the grand opening of that. Are there a treatment center that helps veterans, actually active duty right now? They're going to be expanding to veterans as well. And then they're taking them in three different stages. They're starting with just active duty personnel, helping them process PTSD and mental health, things like that. It's voluntary, so they, but everything's locked down. I had to be escorted to the back open house area, but it's definitely secure. And so as beds open and things like that, they will open up to veterans as the second option, and the last option is first responders. I thought that was really nice. So that was, that's great. Love to see that they're right here in our community, right across the street. And saw a couple of people from the city there today, Zach and Rachel. She is. And so really happy to see, once again, our city taking care of trends and active personnel. And even though we're not like right on the water like Everett or Kitsap, something like that, we're, houses in this area are much more affordable than right there in Everett next to the basins. And so I really do see kind of the valley as probably chock full of active duty personnel. We just don't know the exact numbers and like where specifically, but so that was neat to see, and I was glad to go to that.
Thank you, council member. Council member Kenny.
I had the pleasure of attending an economic advisory development, economic
Economic development advisory.
For, thank you. Sally Petty is a member of that board, and she attended, she's interested in historic preservation and exploring some potential projects downtown, putting plaques on historic buildings and things like that. So she attended Monroe Historical Society Board Meeting, I think, last week, week before, and then invited me to attend one of their meetings and got some traction behind doing some development of some historic preservation projects downtown to generate some tourism and interest in between our two signs. We noted that now we have these historic signs indicating that we have a historic downtown, and shouldn't we be developing some kind of attractions or something to, you know, promote our historic culture downtown, some of our buildings, et cetera. So that was really interesting. And along those lines, I would like to invite everyone to head down to Route Two tomorrow night for our historic Monroe trivia night. Starts at six o'clock, teams of six people, and it's fundraiser for our nonprofit, all volunteer Monroe Historical Society. So the questions aren't that hard. Love to see some city folk down there and some other folks, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Council member Poulter.
Kevin, thank you for that report that, I'm sorry I missed that. It sounds like that was really beneficial and very thoroughly explained, so thank you. I just enjoyed a week off last week and look forward to serving you all in the future.
Thank you. Council member Davis. Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and turn to staff now, Human Services' report from Rachel Adams. Good evening. You may need to turn on the mic.
There's a green light. I see the reflection of a green light.
So apparently over there, green means go, over here, red means go. I'm confused.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Monroe City council members. I have my work report included in your package tonight. The, a couple of items I wanted to just bring to your attention was there's a a rental assistance update from our contract with Take the Next Step. They've done a wonderful job with those funds that we've been able to provide for them through the SHB fourteen oh six money that the city receives restricted use funds. For over three months, they were able to help twenty families totaling ninety-three individuals with an average of two thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars being the rental assistance that was paid to keep families safe and secure in their homes. So that that's, they've had wonderful results with that. And the other item, cold weather shelter opened early this season. We had a little bit of a cold snap right out of the gate, and they are open currently. Last night, they had two people at the Monroe Cold Weather Shelter location and nine in Snohomish, and they'll be open again tonight. They're at a new location over on Lewis Street, and that seems to be going pretty well. The last item to bring to your attention is the after action report for the Great Shakeout. We, I, under the direction of Chief Jolly and Brad Falberg, was able to set up a rave alert that went out to city staff, and we had about a thirty percent return rate for people letting us know, checking in if they were okay, or if they needed assistance on our exercise. So one of the things that we will be bringing to the next emergency management team meeting is follow up on how we can do better next time.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Make that thirty-one percent, because I got an email, but I didn't know I was supposed to respond. So I just read it, and I thought, hey, we're doing good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Perfect.
All right, any other questions? Next report out we have is from Director Farrell for the Parks Department. Director Farrell.
Evening, Mayor. Evening, council members.
You walked up and there was music.
Walk-up music, I like that. All right, so I just have a couple of things. You know, the department report is attached in the agenda, your packets. But I want to do a little deeper dive in the Monroe Park Board. Last month, Snohomish County resident Allison Jones, she presented to the park board an idea for a communication board. I might have mentioned this briefly at a previous meeting. Communication board in the parks to help children with disabilities communicate. I want to hand out, just to kind of get an idea of what a stuff's going everywhere. So you get an idea what a and communication boards, they have pictures and symbols that are an effective way for nonverbal speech challenged and early learning individuals to communicate with friends and caregivers. Placing these in our playgrounds ensures that everyone can express themselves. They are developed by experts in augmentative and alternative communication, and are universally understandable and easy to use. So we plan to start incorporating them in our two community parks. You know, the large parks, Sky River Park at Lake Ty, and also Blueberry, since we have a plan to in the process of putting in a new playground there. And then eventually the rest of our playgrounds, and we hope that other organizations in our community may follow our lead and incorporate them in recreational play facilities for children. and incorporate them in recreational play facilities for children in Monroe. I want to also add that local service organizations have recognized the benefits of adding these in children's playgrounds in Monroe. And as an example, the Monroe Koanis Club has made a three thousand dollar donation commitment. And I imagine that others will follow. And then last, on this item, it supports our aspirational vision. So I'm really excited about this. It got unanimous excitement from our park board members. Imagine Monroe, our parks are accessible for all to enjoy. This may be familiar words, creating a safe place for all. So anyways, I just want to dig down, pull deeper in that, share that with you. So really excited about that. And then the other thing is outside of the report, you know that we've sent out a couple of updates to you with the bird flu outbreak that we had at Lake Ty or that we are experiencing, I should say, at Lake Ty. So an update on that is that since last Friday and the weekend, all the way through today, we've had just a total of three dead birds. So it appears to be tapering off. And, but Fish and Wildlife say that this could be another two to four weeks, you know, for this to pass. And they, they, they told us, informed us also that this is not the only place in Snohomish County where there have been outbreaks. They've, there's been about nine different locations in Snohomish County. So they were anticipating to see more of this. This is, this is occurring throughout the United States, but also in Washington. And anyways, I just also want to say that I'm very pleased with our staff in handling this from the get-go. You know, we've been working closely under the direction of the Fish and Wildlife from the state of Washington and also the Department of Health. And our staff have been very professional, taken seriously at prompt, and just following all the protocols for handling, you know, deceased birds and also putting up all the notices in the park and also on our website and social media. So that's my update.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Farrell.
Thank you.
I'll start off with the flag I saw go first, because I, you're in my peripheral vision. Councilmember Starborough.
Yeah, Mike, in your report, appreciate your report. I have two concerns. One is the vandalism of the public toilets at Ty Park, fires in the trashcans, et cetera. The other was the fire in the trashcan at Travelers Park. And I know the police have done a lot towards trying to figure out who's doing what. My concern is, and it's not your problem, and it's going to be our problem, is at what point do we have to lock those things up before we have a big fire? Big band was tearing things apart. And that's a rhetorical question that you don't have to answer, but I think it's one that we as a council and we as a city are going to have to deal with sooner or later. Deputy Ryan, if you have anything to add to my concern about that, please say so. But that's, that's, that's what stood out to me. It's kind of like, how many garbage bags at Lowerland Park do we pick up? And that we haven't handled, we kind of got a handle on that pretty much. But now we have a new problem. As we run people out of here, they move there, and after we run them out of there, they move over there. See if you want to leave their calling card. They're coming to notice that society by doing things like this. I hope you can feel better or what?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Yes, so we have that in the report, just noting that actually it was Sky River Park experienced quite a bit. And, and it's, 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 we have, we have cameras in some of our parks now. We work closely with the police. You know, as you know, our staff pretty much daily are in the parks and check the parks and whatnot. But I wouldn't say, in the case of a lot of that, that Sky River Park vandalism, I think they were youths that were doing that. So, so I would say necessarily it moved from one place to another. But, but I mean, things occur moving from one park to another, but I wouldn't say it's the same. You know, individuals that are just kind of moving around. But it's, it's something that, you know, we, we try to, you know, as far as whether we're going to design an improvement in the park, you know, to try to, you know, be preventative about it. But I think the cameras go a long way. And again, keeping communication with, with, with our police department as well. And, you know, just, you know, trying to give them as much information as possible to help them, you know, as far as, you know, evidence.
And are the cameras helping us catch the pervert?
They're, they, they are. I can't really speak to as far as catching somebody, but, but they're, they're giving us clues as far as kind of what's going on. So then, you know, it, it's, it's put a stop to some, some, some things. I was gonna say.
I didn't mean to push out the spot.
Commander Ryan. Commander Ryan.
Partnership. So I believe it was two years ago, we implemented the PBS policy here at the city, which was really the, the backbone to getting the cameras, at least at a few of our parks currently. We are monitoring those cameras twenty-four seven. They're really reactive based. So when we get information about an incident that happened, our staff are taking the time to review the footage to see if we can get a vehicle description, suspect description. And I can really only point to one incident so far where our review of the cameras has actually assisted in locating someone that was presenting a problem in one of our parks, so.
Thank you, because in our, in all of our meetings, we, we hear consistently from our patrons how much they enjoy our park system. And I hate to see a few ruin it for the many, which is commonly the problem. Just because they're, they're mad because they're not somewhere else in life or something. We need those bathrooms. And we're also talking about building something downtown that's going to have a public bathroom. Need to incorporate, I think, some cameras and/or some way of determining who's doing that so we don't have, so people feel free to, or safe at least, to go to bathrooms down there if they need them. They need public bathrooms so they don't do things where they shouldn't be doing it. I know you're on top of it, but that, that was what stood out to me in your report. Here we go again, if you are going to ruin it for the many. And we, we need to keep on top of that. We thank you for doing it, but as a council and a city, we need to keep on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Hanford, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor.
You had your flag.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two, two things. I absolutely love this. I absolutely love this. And then the second thing is, I really appreciate all the updates about the bird flu, not just in our city email, but also on social media and things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Kenny.
Thank you. I concur on all these comments. I did have a question for Commander Ryan. The day that the explosion happened in the bathroom at Sky River Park was the day that we had a cross-country meet there. And I was present for that event. And we had three visiting schools there that day. And my question is, did we ever find out through our cameras? Do we have any leads on who did that? Because my thoughts were, and all the coaches talked about this, were some kids from out of town maybe participating in this. It was pretty questionable.
Commander Ryan.
Unfortunately, I don't have the answer on that. So I'll check with the chief tomorrow.
That would be great. Thanks so much. Thank you. And thanks for all you do to keep us safe.
All right. Any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda then is the City Administrator Report. I'll turn to Deborah Knight. We're focused on the first one, which is the extended agenda.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So looking forward to the extended agenda. We will have our meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-first canceled in observance of Thanksgiving week. Looking forward then to November twenty-eighth. We will have a P three committee meeting. We have a couple of items on the agenda. We've got the Trails Master Plan update with Ben Swanson, and then a Water System Lead and Copper Rule update with John Landy. For the regular business meeting, starting at seven PM, we will, we will have the standard accounts payable and meeting minutes. Then the ordinance repealing the pet licensing requirement, which was discussed this evening. And then acceptance of an Office of Public Defense grant with Greg Pylent. We will also have then a discussion led by Kate Turtleow on the twenty twenty-four land use scenarios for the comprehensive plan. So these are coming back from the Planning Commission for council consideration. And that's all I have for the extended agenda.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions on the extended agenda? All right. It's City Administrator Report.
All righty. So just a reminder to council that we will have our municipal campus groundbreaking ceremony on Friday, the seventeenth, starting at three thirty PM. So we have a potential quorum notice for that meeting. Hopefully you all can attend. I know we've had, Jordan Otto has been here this evening waiting for the council approval on the award for that project. And it is always interesting to me because we do a lot of work kind of leading up to these moments and don't often have, take the time to stop and celebrate just how long it has taken to get here and all of the work by many, many people that has made this moment possible. So I just want to say thank you to city staff for all of their work and also to the council and mayor and community for the support on this project. So we look forward to seeing everybody at that groundbreaking and really taking a moment to commemorate. Take a few before photos so we can come back then and have some after photos as well. I know the mayor's been really careful about kind of planning where those pictures will take place for maximum effect on before and after. And then I also wanted to bring to your attention that you have blue sheets in front of you. What we're trying to do is to get an indication of the training opportunities that happen throughout the year and which one of those, if any, you would like to attend. So the one that's coming up most quickly is the Association of Washington Cities has its Legislative Conference in Olympia. Because this is a short legislative session that's actually going to take place. I believe it's January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. So we're particularly interested if any members of council would like to attend. It is a short session, so there's no budget this year, just a budget amendment. But again, it is an opportunity for us to go down, meet with our own legislators and legislators that are supportive of some of the capital projects that we continue to press forward, particularly finish five two-two. So always good to just continue to make those connections and build those relationships. The next one after that is National League of Cities in March. And so again, if you're thinking about going back to Washington DC in order to, again, meet with some of our representatives at the federal level and share with them our legislative priorities, and then also get an opportunity to meet with fellow elected officials from across the United States. If you're interested in doing that, let us know sooner rather than later so we can begin to ensure that you could be staying at the conference hotel and that we can book, that we can book your airfare as soon as possible as well. So one thing that we did note is, we forgot to write at the top with your name here. So if you could write your name so we know who you are, when you turn in your sheets, just pencil that in at the top of the page. That would be super helpful. And I think that's all I have this evening.
Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead. It's at the City Hall, yes. The, yes. 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 What we're trying to do is we're trying to take a picture like in front of where the new chambers is going to be so that when we take another picture with similar people, that you have sort of a before and after. And also at the, the justice wing, which is where PD and the, the court entrance is going to be, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, yes, good point. Yes, you, you will, you will likely have a shovel that you'll need to, you know, push into the ground or into some dirt and toss it, so. All right. Any other questions on the report? All right. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Oh, yes, thank you. I did have one other item. We did get a kudos for Vicki Thayer, who works in our finance department. Our water station, which is out on Village Way, went, went out and was kind of unavailable to customers. And there were customers who actually use that water system to fill up tanks so they can use it in their homes. And so that system being down was an impact to a number of families. And this was a kudos from one of those customers to Vicki for keeping her informed kind of throughout the process. So they knew exactly when the water system was going to be back online and available again. So I just wanted to thank our finance director, Becky Cassert, for really working hard with her department to provide this level of customer service for those that are part of our utilities and part of our community as well. So shout out to Vicki and also to Becky and her team.
All right. Thank you. So just a couple of reports from me. First, congratulations, Councilmember Foulter, Councilmember Gamble, and Councilmember Parent Walker, all for, for your election. Looking forward to working with each of you into the new year and the subsequent year. So congratulations all. Also, a big thank you and appreciation for our veterans. I know that we have two on our council, Councilmember Scarborough and Councilmember Davis. And we do have a number of other veterans who are, who work for the city. I really appreciate all the work that you have done. I appreciate the sacrifice that your families have made as well in supporting you. And so from my heart to yours, thank you. Then just a note, Light Up Monroe is, is Sunday, the week after, the Sunday after Thanksgiving. So I trust everybody has been receiving information about that. So hopefully, hopefully we'll, we'll see you there. And then I'm going to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. We don't have a meeting next week, and so happy Thanksgiving to each of you. And I look forward to seeing you at Light Up Monroe and also at the subsequent council meeting the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. Yeah, that's all that I have to report this evening. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. We do not, oh, we do have a need for a executive session. Yes, I looked at that. I was going to make a joke. Okay, so we do have a need for a property, for an executive session for property acquisition first in RCW forty-two point thirty point one ten subsection one, subsection little B for an initial five minutes with the potential for extensions. Any extensions will be noticed here in this room and also online, if you're online. When those, when the executive session is over and subsequent extensions, we will then reconvene in this meeting with potential for action to follow, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting. So we are in executive session beginning at seven forty-seven for an initial five minutes.
The executive session has been extended three minutes.
Okay, we are now out of executive session. There is no further business this evening unless there's an objection. We are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving. See you at Light Up Monroe. We are adjourned. Yes, see you Friday.